Nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, Anacortes City Council meeting to order. Ms. Hunt, would you take the roll?
Mr. Carter, Mr. Young, Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Thank you.
Mayor Gere.
Ms. Moulton.
Mr. Young is not able to make it tonight, so I would like to move that we excuse him from tonight's meeting.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Moulton and a second by Mr. McDougal to excuse Mr. Young. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, at this time, would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, we're going to move to item three, Announcements and Committee Reports. And item A under three is the COVID-19 update. And as of July eighteenth, since March of 2020, we've had five thousand four hundred thirteen cases of COVID in the county. We've had seventy-eight fatalities. That's one up in the last month. And three hundred and sixty-three people hospitalized. At Island Hospital, they've tested eighteen thousand eight hundred and six individuals with a positive test of three thousand seventy, excuse me, positive cases of three hundred and seventy-seven, and totally admitted seventy-seven people to Island Hospital since March of 2020 with COVID. Skagit County currently has a case rate of thirty-six per a hundred thousand over the last fourteen days, and a hospitalization rate of one point five COVID patients per a hundred thousand over the last seven days. A total of one hundred fifty-two thousand four hundred and ninety-eight vaccine doses have been administered in Skagit County so far. We're at roughly sixty-four percent of all Skagitonians, twelve years and older, are at least partially vaccinated against COVID-19, and fifty-point-one percent are fully vaccinated in Skagit County, zero to sixty-five. Starting tomorrow, there's going to be some pop-up clinics in Skagit County. Tomorrow, July twentieth, there will be one at the Skagit Valley Softball Fields from five-thirty to seven-thirty P.M. Wednesday, July twenty-first, at Skagit Transit Station in downtown Mount Vernon, from five to nine. Thursday, July twenty-second, is the Concrete Youth Activity Day from three to five P.M. And this coming Saturday, July twenty-fourth, is the Clear Lake Fire Department from ten A.M. to two P.M. And those pop-up clinics are put on by Skagit County Health Department. The Delta variant has been detected in Skagit County, and the good news is that the COVID-19 vaccines are providing protection against the Delta variant, particularly against severe illness leading to hospitalization and death. Recent Skagit County data shows that ninety-six percent of the cases since March first of 2021 have been with unvaccinated individuals. This data tells us that the vaccine works. Statewide, the age range that has the most cases right now are from the twenty to thirty-five year olds. Eighteen percent of the cases are zero to nineteen, thirty-one from the twenty to thirty-four, twenty-four from thirty-five to forty-nine, seventeen percent are sixty-five to seventy-nine, and only three percent of those over at the age of eighty. And that concludes my COVID-19 update for this evening. Are there any additions or discussion? All right, we'll move on then to item three B, Skagit County Law and Justice Council. Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. They've moved the meeting to the tenth of August, so we did not meet this month. Thank you.
Thank you. And item three C is our Public Works Committee update.
Mayor Gere.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The Public Works Committee met at five P.M. today. It was Councilman Walters and myself, as well as staff members Fred Buckemeyer, Public Works Director, and Nicole Tesh. And as usual, we talked about a lot of fascinating projects. One thing is that, as usual, staff is pursuing grants for infrastructure projects, including storm water projects, and also money for the twelfth and Commercial Intersection as part of a Complete Streets Grant. And those are just a couple of the many that they're pursuing currently. The every-ten-year water system plan is getting underway, and what that does is creates a plan for the next twenty-five years of our water system. So it's pretty intensive, with a lot of details that I don't understand, but it all starts at the water treatment plan and how it ends at our tap. So it's a very intensive study that's coming up. We talked a little bit about staffing. The street supervisor, Bill Larson, has recently retired, and there is an internal application system that's happening right now. And then we moved on to the Fidalgo Water System, which we've heard a lot about, and it's been moving very slowly for the city to potentially acquire the Fidalgo Water System. It's on track and in the final stages of creating the resolution to finalize the transfer to the City of Anacortes. So that will be coming to council soon. We can expect that. And lastly, we talked briefly about the C S O project, which is also moving right along. The marine section is a hundred percent designed. It's in permitting right now. The upland section is about eighty percent design completed, and then there's the pump station part of it, and that's all moving along as well. So everything's good. Thanks.
Any additions or questions? All right, we'll go to item three D. I have a proclamation tonight for Dinosaur Week, but I'm going to have Director John Lunsford from the Parks Department come up and tell us a little bit about that, and then I will do my proclamation. Welcome, Mr. Lunsford.
Thank you, Mayor Gere, council members, ladies and gentlemen. So Dinosaur Week is a new thing to many of us. We have a camp this summer called Dinosaur Week Camp at Washington Park. It's for kids to learn about science and to practice science during the summertime. And we reached out to our partners at the library and Anacortes Museum to kind of continue that trend. So the library's going to encourage summer reading around dinosaur themes for our youngest readers, do their storytimes around science and dinosaurs, and the museum's going to encourage people to come and do their research and practice learning more about local history. I don't think they go back to the Jurassic period in the Funk collection, but Mr. Funk was thorough. I'm not entirely certain of how far he goes back. So just with that in mind, we wanted to proclaim Dinosaur Week to call attention to the desire to have kids keep learning in the summertime, to encourage our youngest readers to keep reading and embracing science and their history, and to enjoy it. So we brought a little fun to it. We thought we would change the city seal for a week to a pterodactyl from a seagull, and that's in your packet. So with that in mind, Mayor, we ask you to proclaim this week Dinosaur Week to encourage our youngest learners to keep learning all summer about science, history, and to, above all, keep reading. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lunsford. So at this time, I'm going to read the City of Anacortes' proclamation of Dinosaur Week. It will start on July twenty-sixth, 2020. Whereas dinosaurs roamed the Earth millions of years ago, but still captured the imagination of young and old alike. Whereas this year, the Parks and Recreation Department is offering a dinosaur camp for use at Washington Park to promote learning and love of science. And whereas the Anacortes Public Library is our local resource for knowledge and will host storytimes, present and present a famous dinosaurs in literature scavenger hunt, and generally provide merriment all week long through summer reading activities with the Park and Recreation and beyond. Whereas the Anacortes Museum contains thousands of artifacts and photographs in its collections, viewable online, content for research and enjoyment. Now therefore be resolved, it is fitting and appropriate that I, Lori Gere, Mayor of the City of Anacortes, do hereby proclaim the week of July twenty-sixth, 2021, is our celebration of Dinosaur Week in Anacortes, and I encourage our citizens to enjoy summer reading and the study of dinosaurs, history, and science, dated this nineteenth day of July 2021. Thank you. All right, so now we come to item four, public comment. And I think we have two attendees attending remotely, and we have members in the council chambers this evening. So we'll start in the council chambers. If anyone in the audience would like to speak to the council on anything that is not on the agenda, it's your opportunity to come forward at this time. Okay. And then remotely, either one of our attendees, online, if you would like to speak, would you raise your hand? Right. Seems like everyone's waiting for the rest of the agenda, so we'll move on. Thank you for being here. Okay, we'll move on to items five, which is our consent agenda, five A and B.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Miller.
I move to approve consent agenda items A and B.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Miller, a second by Mr. McDougal. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. At this time, we'll move on to item six, other business. Item six A is Resolution Thirty Forty-four, disposition of the Tommy Thompson train. This is a discussion with possible action. Ms. Swetnum, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. As you mentioned, Resolution Thirty Forty-four is in the past, and the resolution attempted to carry out the directions from council from last week to return the Tommy Thompson train to the family. So there are a number of recitals that kind of provide the background of how the city has gotten to the point that it's at, and referencing the 2012 donation letter. But the meat of the resolution declares the train and the related equipment as surplus to the needs of the city, and directs that those assets be returned to the Thompson family. I did speak last week with the attorney for the family, who indicated that the ninety-day timeframe for the family to come and retrieve those assets was reasonable based on their expectation and plans. I'm happy to answer any questions, and other than that, I will turn it over to you for discussion.
Counsel. Members of the audience, anybody have anything? Okay, Mr. Walters.
There's just one word change that I sent to the city attorney and Ms. Hunt, and to that and the second recital. Otherwise, I think this is consistent with what we talked about last time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did receive that edit, and Mr. Walters will make that change before the mayor signs.
Any discussion, comments, action?
Mayor Gere.
Ms. Moulton.
I move to adopt Resolution Three Zero Four Four, declaring the Thomas G. Thompson Jr. train and related equipment to be surplus to the needs of the City of Anacortes, and directing the return of the train and equipment to the Thompson family.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Walters. Is there any other discussion? Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote?
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on then to item six B, access Anacortes fiber internet update. Ms. Shu.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm pleased to present tonight's update on access to Anacortes fiber internet. Just bring that slide up. So our GPON customer count and revenue continues to grow month to month. At the end of the business day today, we have eight hundred and eight customers in service with monthly revenue of over thirty, excuse me, fifty-three thousand dollars. This is broken down into six hundred ninety-one residential customers and one hundred and seventeen business customers. One thing that I will point out in this screen and then throughout the presentation is that we are renaming some of our areas to provide an easier way to identify. So what we have been calling from A Avenue to Annacopper Road will now be, excuse me, from D Avenue to Annacopper Road is now Gwemy's View, and the South Fidalgo Bay is an area that looks out at South Fidalgo Bay. So we'll be just kind of changing a little bit of the terminology to make it easier for people to understand the areas that we're looking at providing service. In our current service area, we have eight hundred and seventy-eight orders of the potential two thousand two hundred and seventy-three, which equates thirty-eight point six percent market share. So we're very pleased with that, this early in our business, to have that high rate of the market. Every month, I am providing information on our cash flows, and you can see that our revenue at the, for June, was fifty-four thousand seven hundred and twenty-three dollars in year-to-date. We're at just over three hundred thousand dollars. Our operating expenses are at four hundred forty-one thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars as a year-to-date. And so our operating cash flow is still negative, but month-to-month, as our number of service that we put into place increases, that number will decrease so that we are operationally cash flow positive. In June, we had one draw from the line of credit for three thousand, three hundred and six thousand dollars, and we are deferring to the finance department as we're to identify when we're going to be drawing from that in the future. In our current service areas, and on this map, it's the areas that are in green, we have a remaining ninety-seven orders in queue for service in those service areas that we're working on. As I've mentioned in the past, some of the ones that we're still working to be able to put into service do take a little bit longer because they are underground in nature, and it's a little bit longer process. We're happy to do it, but it does take us a little bit longer in terms of how many we can schedule each day. I wanted to talk with you about some of the funding opportunities that we are currently looking out for and trying to help offset the costs associated with the project. We are working to try and find funding, or not find, but trying to secure funding with the American Recovery Plan Act, and we have specifically applied for funding through the Washington State Broadband Office for that. We put in a request for nine point seven five million dollars for the West End and the Gwemy's View area, that's the area within the red circle. There's also a separate pool of ARPA or AR, American Recovery Plan Act funds available through the Washington Public Works Board, and we are looking at opportunities to be able to apply for that grant as well. In July, we responded to a request for information through a project that is through the National Telecommunications and Information Administration. It's a broadband infrastructure program, and that requires a partnership with a governmental agency and an ISP, an Internet Service Provider. The Washington State Broadband Office is serving as the governmental agency for all of the state of Washington, and the city is applied as the Internet Service Provider. These three areas that are highlighted are the areas in which we have proposed as project areas that would allow us to pass an additional seventeen hundred premises. And this is something that is a fast-moving program. We expect that there will be, or we know that they have to make a funding decision by November of 2021, and we put in a request for eight point nine million dollars to assist with that. So this is where I just wanted to point out some of the naming structure. So this area in blue, we are referring to as Gwemy's View. The area in pink is Borough's Bay, and the area in green is South Fidalgo Bay. One thing that I do want to point out is that we have been very clear, as we were putting together the materials for this grant, that city tax dollars would only be available to use within the City of Anacortes limits, and that we would be looking for the grant funding to pay a hundred percent of the areas that expand outside of the city limits. Just another way to look at our network expansion. So in the West End, we currently have construction underway. We are passing two thousand three hundred and seventy-five premises. We have over five hundred orders that we've received for that area. The funding source for this project is the Savvy Bank Line of Credit, and we also have put this phase through for ARPA funding, which is being administered through the Washington State Broadband Office. East of A Avenue, kind of backfilling our current service area, will allow us to pass an additional one thousand eight hundred and fifteen premises. That design work is underway right now, and we expect by 2022 to have construction and installations beginning. A portion of this is being funded through the Economic Development Administration, and the balance of the project will be funded through a line of credit. Gwemy's View, which passes eight hundred and seventy-five premises, we expect that that would be done 2022 if we are successful with our grant application. Otherwise, we'll likely move out to 2023. And this is one of the areas that we have put in for the ARPA funding administered through the Washington State Broadband Office. We also included this in our NTIA grant application, so there are places we're applying for grants for the same areas, hoping that we'll be successful with at least one of them. The South Fidalgo Bay, which covers the urban growth area along Highway Twenty in March's Point, we have included in the NTIA grant application. There are about three hundred and sixty-seven premises in this area, and we would only be able to get to it in 2022 if we are successful with our grant application. Otherwise, it will likely be in the 2023 to 2024 timeframe. And finally, Borough's Bay, which passes four hundred and sixty-six premises, is only if the grant application is successful. Otherwise, well, at this point, we would not be proceeding with that, and that would be in 2022. This was one of the areas that we also included in the, one of the three areas in the NTIA grant application. We're looking to expand the network as quickly as possible, knowing that there are a lot of steps that go into it between the design, construction, before we actually get to the point of being able to do installations. So again, I wanted to point out our current service areas. We do provide business in the central business district, in Old Town and M. Avenue, and also these areas up here that we kind of have called amongst ourselves the 2020 aerial areas. We do pass two thousand two hundred and seventy-three premises. We'd love to be, if you don't have our service right now, we'd love to be your service provider, and we are accepting applications throughout the entire city. But if you're in that green area right now and do not have City of Anacortes service, I'd encourage you, and have been thinking about it, I'd encourage you to reach out and get that order in. So before we move out to the West End and work on those five hundred orders as that work is progressing, that we'll be able to get to you now for efficient use of your time in getting you hooked up to Anacortes Access Fiber Internet. A 2021 expansion is in the West End. That construction is underway right now. We expect that installations will begin in the fall of this year, and we're currently working to secure easements on many of the private streets. And like I had mentioned previously, we are accepting pre-orders in those areas for service and have over five hundred pre-orders in place right now. We do have special projects that are underway. The Anacortes Senior Activities Center, we are going to be putting fiber in place, and that will replace our current wireless connectivity. That work will be done, I believe, by the end of this month. We're working with Rock Island Communications on a dark fiber lease between Anacortes and Mount Vernon, and then a separate dark fiber lease that is within the City of Anacortes. We've had conversations with the Swinimish Indian Tribal Community about business-class Internet service at one of their sites. And as part of our extension out into the West End, we'll be able to bring Western Washington University at the Shannon Point Marine Center. They are looking for dedicated Internet access, and we'll be able to provide that late this year, and have another site with Island Hospital that we're looking for to bring a dark fiber lease together. So we have lots of activity that's underway. I know that I've been talking about the EDA grant application that does continue to be processed. We're working on finalizing the easements with many of the homeowner associations and property owners out in the West End, and are continuously monitoring grant opportunities. This is a good time to be in the broadband business. I think that we're in a situation where we have a proven ability to, and have processes in place in order to know how to get the service up and running. So we are seeking ARPA grant funding through the Washington State Broadband Office. We did apply for the NTIA grant opportunity with the Washington State Broadband Office, and we're continuing to just follow all the broadband expansion legislation. I did want to point, just to take this time to share, that we are your city-owned and operated municipal fiber network. Our plan and intent is to provide high-speed fiber Internet service to meet your business and residential needs. We think that we do this in a very affordable, reliable way, and when you have a question, you can call and you can talk to CJ. He's very, very approachable. You can actually come into City Hall now and meet with him, and he can answer any questions that you may have. But we really want to be your Internet Service Provider of choice. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Miller.
Okay, hopefully, it's an easy couple of questions. The third install team, are we up and running yet on that?
The positions are currently hosted externally, and we will expect to have them on in mid September. That actually is a very good timing because that's about the timeframe that we think that we'll be moving out towards the West End for the installations.
And then I guess the really easy question, hopefully, is we expect to have a third more capacity of installs as far as, I'm looking at the thirty, thirty-five to forty installs a month-ish, and we'll hope to add another thirty-three percent to that number. Is that kind of your goal?
Pardon? Our goal is to continue to increase the rate of installations, knowing that all of the installations that we'll be doing, especially in the West End, are going to be underground, and so that does take more time. So this will help us to be able to do that even more efficiently.
Awesome. Great. Thank you.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. McDougal.
Thank you for the report, Ms. Shu. A question came up, actually, speaking with a citizen the other day. Just wanted to confirm, the West End construction and installations, those are all underground. There's really no aerial utilities out in the West End, and we're not planning currently any installations using water pipes in the West End, correct?
We do have the waterline installations as a tool in our toolkit, but that is not, we're looking at, or a primary way to do the connections. You are correct that in the West End, those are underground installations.
All right, thank you. And then, do you have a sense for the ARPA funding timeline, or is that by end of year, or is it just kind of up in the air at this point?
So I don't have the exact date yet for the ARPA funding.
So I don't have the exact date yet for the ARPA funding. There, there were, they kind of put the ARPA funding on hold so that they could get the NTIA grant request for information responses back and just now are coming back and saying, okay, now we're ready to talk about that ARPA funding. The NTIA is very accelerated. We're all funding to be made by November. There's some additional time with the ARPA funding and so the focus really was on the NTIA portion and now we're working on the state's portion of the ARPA funding.
Got it. Thank you. I also wanted to point out actually a piece from your numbers there and kind of a big thank you to the community as well. The original business model targeted kind of a blend of about 75% of customers, residential customers purchasing the 100 megabit service and 25% purchasing the gigabit. And that blend resulted in average revenue per residential customer at $46.50 a month. Given Ms. Yu's current numbers, we're actually averaging $53.75 a month in average customer revenue, which means we're getting more gigabit service. Actually means we're running about 15 and a half percent ahead on, ahead of projections on revenue. So that's, that's terrific. So thank you to the community for, for signing up for the gig service.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any other comments from the audience? Yes, come on up. Oh, you can turn on the mic. It has to have a blue light.
I got it.
There you go.
And this can go.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Wim Hooperman. I live at 3412 K Avenue and I'm not green on the map. Why not?
You're not on the map?
The map of where service is provided. I'm in the middle of town and I'm not provided with any service. I want to know why.
Mr. Hooperman, why didn't you tell me once more your address and what I'm happy to do is tell you tomorrow.
Well, it's, it's not just me. I know it's the largest segment of my, of the world that I live in.
Well, a lot of us are in that area that don't have it yet. We're in the awkward in-between. So what it was...
It's not on the projection to be developed. It's that whole...
Are you talking about this?
Just middle between the two green things.
Emily, it's, it's that area 32nd to 41st.
Yeah.
That whole area.
A kind of KM Avenue.
There is a reason. Let Emily tell you because I'm in that same place with you.
Almost, yeah.
And this is an area that is part of our grant application to the EDA and we were successful with that grant application and we're continuing through, really going through the different necessary hoops when you have federal funding that is assisting a project to have that move forward. So it is a part of our, our service area. We expect that that will be the area that we're focusing on next year for the expansion in to this area. So basically it's from kind of D Avenue up through here and it kind of connects out to Highway 20. So ever all of this area in this general area is part of that area that is funded through in part with the EDA there.
But I can live with one more year, but I hope it's not five.
No, it's one. I'll call you up when I'm hooking up.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walters.
I, I know that a lot of this information is in here, but I wonder if maybe in future presentations, we might get a single map with all the colored areas and callouts for when each one's going to...
Oh, that's a good idea. It's like a date.
...project to come online and really as much information, you know, numbers to pass, date to come online, date in the alternative scenario where we do get the grant or if we don't get the grant on one screen so that we can just sort of see it all at once.
That's a great suggestion and we're happy to put that together. Our hope is to try and provide as helpful as we can to do this possible.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the council or the audience? Anyone attending remotely? All right, thank you, Ms. Yu. All right, at this, at this time, we're going to go to item 6C, ordinance 3064. This is our critical area update, draft three. This is discussion this evening. Mr. Meesmer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to introduce Ms. Tess Cooper. Ms. Cooper's been working very hard on bringing that critical areas ordinance update to where it is today, very close to a final document. So what we're hoping for is discussion this evening, any revisions that we may need to make to the document and then we'll be bringing this back on the 26th for a council review and a potential approval, we hope. So with that, I'd like to bring Ms. Cooper on.
Thank you, Mr. Meesmer. Thank you, Council, Madam Mayor. Tonight, we are going to...
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walters.
Sorry. Could we turn Ms. Cooper's volume down a little bit? Nothing wrong with her, just in the, in the chambers here.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead Tess, we'll see how it sounds.
Is that any better?
A little. Does that sound...
My room's squeaky.
Can you hear that all right in the chambers? It needs to go down or up? A little down. It still needs to go down a little. Is that a Mitchell function or a Tess function? Okay, all right. Let's try again.
Okay, let's see.
That seems better. Is that better? Okay, go ahead.
Excellent. I'll talk quietly. We are in the finish line of the critical area regulations update. Thank you all for all the hard work and feedback you've put in. Tonight, we're going to review public comment that we've recently solicited on one last change that City Council wanted to make to the document. Any last discussion that council members may have? And for staff and questions or answers from staff? And then any City Council final thoughts for going forward with the presenting the final document next week? Tonight, we'll do a quick discussion of the public comments we received on the change, review the draft and supporting documents if needed. And then hopefully next week, we can approve the document, not even the draft, it's not a draft, and adopt the ordinance. So remember the discussion last week? My screen now it's seeing a pause. There was a suggestion change from council members to the public services section and I have the notice up where we solicited public comment on this section only. Just scratch telephone, cable television and change it to telecommunications and natural gas lines and public road and multimodal transportation corridors. For example, Tommy Thompson Trail and Waymus Channel Trail. We said this section out for public comment for 14 days and tonight, we're going to do a review of what those comments came back as. We received five comments. You got them in a table in your packet. There was some comments on our items, so I just focused in on creating the table and responding to the multimodal section that we were specifically asking for comments There was comments that there was no definition for multimodal in the document. So staff suggests we agree on a definition of multimodal and put that in the definition section. Comment that the citizen wants the provisions to make reference to making sure native conditions and ecological benefits are the focus and prohibit unintended decline from heavy use such as evident on the Tommy Thompson Parkway currently and that the document should link closer to the comp plan and Washington Administrative Code 365-196-800. And these are all good perspectives to note, especially on the restoration and the decline of trails being used. And staff wants to focus or add attention that specifically the Waymus Channels Trail and the Tommy Thompson Trail will all be in shoreline jurisdiction as well and subject to SMP regulations for the restoration and ecological benefits. And SMP itself does integrate a restoration aspect. So those should be, those won't be missed. They're, they're not an admission from code that both the critical area ordinance and the shoreline master program for those two particular projects will meet those requirements. We also received a comment that there was a lack of clarification for multimodal, again, without having a definition and believes that it should be just limited to pedestrians. And staff thanks the citizen for submitting the comments. One comment is in full favor of reduction or reliance on the use of roads and increasing more friendly and less consumptive forms of transportation such as walking and bicycles, but does not support the proposed change to include multimodal in the critical area Staff wants to thank them for their comment. Adding in multimodal into this provision will actually require these types of projects to meet critical area standards of avoidance, minimization and restoration. So staff does not feel that, that not including them would be a better protection. And lastly, in general, the commenter does not support development in critical areas or regulations that create exceptions, but they did provide suggestions to improving the language and the functionality of this provision and will look at their proposed change here in a second. Multiple staff have read it and provided some response and staff feels that it's a good option for City Council to consider. So let's see. On the Evergreen Islands comment in your packet, you can see the suggested change to languages in blue. So they suggest adding a few clarifications to most of this public service to protect wetland streams, wildlife habitat and other sensitive critical areas while allowing service when the strict application of the standards in this chapter would otherwise unreasonably prohibit the provision of essential public services and amendments. And so they just focused on essential public services. One, public services include but are not limited to water supplies, sewer and stormwater management facilities, electric power, telecommunication and natural gas lines. And then they added public road segments and multimodal transportation segments. Added the word essential again to clarify.
Tess, excuse me for a moment. You can't see it on the screen, is that what I'm hearing? If can you...
Yeah. The, the screen doesn't have what Tess is reading as far as Evergreen Island's proposed language.
Oh.
Yeah, I said, given me, it's saying it's, let me see here, sorry. I'm paused. How do I fix that?
Mayor Gere.
Mr. McDougall.
I'll stop and I'll reshare.
Yeah, Ms. Cooper, if you, if you actually click on the link in the comment that you embedded in the, the packet, it'll pull up the, the document on Laserfish, I believe.
Yes, that's just a screenshot, so the link isn't working, but that should be working now, correct?
Yeah, we've seen it now. Is that their language? Okay, yes. Yes Tess, that's, we're seeing it now.
Thank you. I apologize. So this, this first section is the first section that I just read. So part two, again, they just added the word essential. Public services may be allowed to alter critical areas and buffers only when the following conditions are met. Mitigation sequencing per AM 16197135. This looks like a typo on their part, but 13512A has been applied. So I'll make sure that that code reference is correct. The application of critical area regulations would unreasonably restrict the ability of the public agency to provide, again, essential public services. I'm not sure, hopefully you can see the difference between the blue and the black. There is no other practical alternative to the proposed development with less impact on the critical area. The proposed development does not create a health or safety hazard on or off the development site and will not be detrimental to the properties or improvements in the vicinity. And then these next few are blue, so these are ones that they suggest adding. E, where feasible, development is located on existing road grades, utility corridors or previously disturbed areas. F, designs for crossings, boardwalks, bridges and culverts are consistent with Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife and National Marine Fisheries Service's best available science for the protection of fish and wildlife habitat. These structures shall not interfere with fist patches, the flow and circulation of water or other wetland or stream processes and shall be located at a 90-degree angle or as close as possible thereto to the stream, wetland or buffer. In streams with salmoned habitat, bridges, bottomless culverts or other alternatives that would allow fist patches are required. Bridge piers or buttmans may not be placed within wetlands, streams or stream banks unless there is no feasible alternative. G, constructions of crossings will occur during work windows and time limits established by state and federal agencies with jurisdiction due decrease impacts to protected species. H, when expanding stream crossings that do not meet these standards, the crossing shall be upgraded as necessary to reduce stream and wetland impacts and meet the requirements of this subsection. I, J and K are all the same, there's no proposed changes. And then the last change they suggest is to three, it will be a condition of any alteration granted a public agency for essential public service exception that only the portion of the alteration that must be located in a critical area may so be located. And that's the total of their proposed provisions.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walters.
We talked about this a little bit. I think that EF and G here are pretty... I think that EF and G here are pretty valuable pieces of language that basically would require us to follow best available science and best management practices anyway in designing these, what are we calling them here? Public services where they would be present within a critical area buffer. H, I don't, I don't really follow exactly what H is saying, so I wouldn't support utilizing H. I also would not recommend changing public services to essential public services because the term that's used here is public services and essential doesn't provide any additional definition or change the definition, and we ought to use just the same term. But EF and G, I think it would be useful to put these in to reassure people, this is what we're going to be doing. I would expect that we'd be doing these anyway, but I don't see any harm to having them in the code. And there was one comment about this, so I think it's worth mentioning it as well, that all of these types of facilities would have to follow the mitigation sequencing anyway. It's not a, this section is not a way to bypass mitigation sequencing. But for, for those of us that are concerned that mitigation sequencing may be a methodology that can be less effective than we might want it to be, I think these things might help a little bit. So I'd be supportive of adding EF and G into our language. There were a couple of comments about the definition of multimodal transportation corridors. This language here, if Ms. Cooper scrolls up, it suggests segments. I don't, I don't know that it really matters whether it's segments or systems or corridors, but I would note that GMA includes support for multimodal transportation systems as a required goal of GMA, and it doesn't define it either. Multimodal does not mean simply pedestrian, though. That's the multi-part. So I don't, I don't think that's a reasonable English definition of multimodal. I'm not really advocating that we add a definition. I think it stands alone, and we should just basically use the GMA case law definition.
Mayor.
Ms. Molton.
Thank you. I also support the inclusion of EF and G. I appreciate that level of detail and clarity. H, I don't, I don't know that that, that doesn't really, I don't, I wouldn't advocate including that. Again, to agree with Mr. Walters, the segments and the essential, I don't think have a place here, but EF and G, I am in favor of including.
Thank you, Ms. Molton.
Mayor. Just to get consensus, during our planning committee meeting, I'm, I'm in agreement. The essential and the segments don't necessarily have a purpose, but EF and G make a lot of sense, and it, and it is clear for the folks who are not as versed in this to make sure that it is important aspects when we're talking about possibly doing some kind of trail development through that area. So I think they were great additions, and I appreciate the thought that went into them.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Mr. McDougal.
Yeah, I'd say, along with my fellow councilpersons, I'm definitely in support of EF and G. I don't feel strongly about the, the word essentially in there, if it's kept in or not. I was curious if, if we could get a comment from the author on what they, which ones they define as essential, or if they would potentially just clarify what they're, what they're looking for there?
Would any member of the audience like to address that?
Hi, my name's Marlene Finley. I live at 1410 Kellogg Place, and I'm the president of Evergreen Islands. The word essentials intended to further limit, when is it important? When, when is there no other area to put these things? Is it, is it, we're not looking at, right, amenities, cost-saving, convenience? These are truly exceptions. This needs to, this, the standard needs to be narrowed in order to truly be an exception. And I think the word essential's been used a lot during the pandemic. You know, what's truly important? And it's not convenience, and it's not an amenity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor. I think everybody's commented on, you know, now that it's gone, E, D, and F, or D, E, and F. Yeah, they, they make sense to me, and I concur with the, with the wording as well, that essential doesn't need to be in there. But I'm trying to figure out where is, where does it fit in, in the actual document, but that's okay, we'll, we'll figure that out later. Maybe you need to roll up to the top a little bit to see where it's fitting into the, like, what section? Give me a page number, or have we gotten that far yet? This is from Ms. Cooper.
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Miesmer.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. So page 18.
Mayor.
Ms. Molton.
So keep page 18 under, under the table, 197045.
That's, that's where we would, that's where we put it. Okay.
Ms. Molton?
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I just thought while we were all getting to that page, I, I did also want to mention at the very beginning of the comment, it says, of public services, it says, "To protect wetlands, streams, wildlife habitat, and other sensitive critical areas while allowing services." I don't even know if while allowing services, but I like that beginning part, "To protect wetland streams, wildlife habitat, and other sensitive critical areas when the strict application of the standards in this chapter would otherwise unreasonably prohibit the provision of public services." I like, I like most of that sentence, I think, I don't like all of it, but I think that especially that beginning part is just a reminder of what we're doing there, "to protect the wetland streams, wildlife habitat, and other sensitive critical areas." I would include that part.
Mayor.
Mr. Walters.
Yeah, I think that that addition is redundant, but maybe okay regardless, because it's, it functions as a reminder, like Ms. Molton says. I, I also think that I get at, I understand what Evergreen Islands is getting at with addition of the word essential. I just don't think it helps get to the point where we understand what it means. I think that the, the rest of the text in this section is trying to get at, at narrowing that down, and the adjective doesn't help.
Mayor.
Ms. McDougal.
Yeah, I agree with Ms. Molton. I really like that, that first sentence. As far as the distinction between public services and essential public services, we have kind of a listing of public services under number one there. Are there any of those services that are considered non-essential? Like that, like, is there a distinction between that list under number one and a list that would be considered essential?
Mayor.
Mr. Walters.
Yeah, so for example, we modified that in this last round to say telecommunications instead of telephone and cable TV, because it didn't include, so for example, fiber. But I think a lot of us might think cable TV is much less, much less essential, but we tried to avoid making that distinction. It's a pretty short list. I mean, water supply, sewer and stormwater, electric power. We, we also changed it from just telephone, cable television, and gas generally to the lines. So the objective there being a line as a linear thing might have to cross some kind of critical area to get to where it needs to go, but a natural gas facility of some kind, a meter, a pump station for something, might not be permitted, whereas it might have been under the previous section.
Mr. Miesmer? I'm gonna say something.
Well, I think this has been a very good discussion. It's given staff direction on implementing the comments from Evergreen Island. We will get those into the document coming forward next week. Are there any other items that the council would like to discuss in regards to this?
Mayor.
Mr. Miller.
So I, I had, you know, I mentioned this earlier, a couple of months ago, really, when we started talking about this, my concerns with the input, all the work that we did with Title 19 and, and creating more places to live, which I, I think place to live is also essential. And one of the areas, as, as I had some offline conversations with Ms. Cooper and, and Mr. Miesmer, was accessory dwelling units. And that's really what it kind of came down to in the code that concerns me a little bit. So on page 12 and page 20, no, sorry, page 21 and page 101, maybe something to look at would be whether we add accessory dwelling units along with garages, and then also a normal appurtenances. That's something I'd like an opinion from the staff, because I think, I don't think it changes. Again, I've, I've asked for an expert opinion on it, but a garage versus an ADU as far as impervial surf, impervious surfaces doesn't, doesn't pass my logic test as being different, but I'm willing to get an expert opinion on that. So that's really all I, all I have, that's maybe a little bit different from what everybody else has been thinking of.
Any comments on that?
Mayor.
Mr. Walters.
I have an unrelated comment. And that is simply that the, the chapter is titled Critical Area Regulations, and, and no other chapter in Title 19 is, includes the word regulations. I, I think it should just be called Critical Areas.
Noted. Thank you.
Mayor.
Ms. Molton.
I want to thank Ms. Cooper, and I also want to thank the members of our community that have so diligently followed this arduous, long process and contributed their knowledge and expertise and passion for the environment and our community. So thank you very much.
Any additional comments from council, staff, members of the audience? Come on up, Andrea.
Andrea Dahl, 1319 Eighth Street. Is there anything I need to push here, or is everything good? Okay, it's been a long time. I'm, I'm kind of concerned about a trail and a road. And, and I know that the shoreline management program is going to oversee some of these things, when, especially when you're going into the MGB properties. I also understand that if I were developing that area and building homes, I'd want to know that I'd have a clearance to be able to do this. But I think we need to be clear, whether we're talking about trails in one area, which is going through forest, and along water, which is undeveloped areas, and what we know is going to be developed. And I think there needs to be clarification on that. We see these trails, bike trails and road trails and so forth, all through Seattle. And one minute they are going through forested areas, and next minute they're right next to railroad tracks. So rather than have confusion about what we're doing, I think it'd be better to be just clear right in the beginning about what we're really trying to focus on here, so that we don't have argument about it. I understand kind of how there are segments, and some segments are different than other segments, and I think we need to just be clear on it.
Okay.
My thought.
Thank you. Yes, come on up, Marlene.
Thank you for this opportunity to comment this evening. My name's Marlene Finley, 1410 Kellogg Place, Anna Cordes. I just want to stress that the critical areas ordinance needs to most, first and foremost, avoid impacts. And for, and for example, Department of Ecology Wetlands Compliance Program has found that wetland enhancements have generally not worked and actually have led to net loss. So we need to avoid whenever possible, because wetlands and riparian areas are complex ecosystems that are difficult to replace, to enhance, or to restore. And please do not allow stream relocations. The example that was provided to you in Island County was more of an agricultural ditch and not a stream. And just think about what it takes in an ecosystem when you try to relocate a stream. And protecting stream buffers are also very important, so that's another area that I think you should really take a second look at as you review the critical area ordinance. Today, more than ever, worldwide even, we know the importance of maintaining healthy environment and a functioning ecosystem. So this is very important, and I appreciate the time you've all taken and attention to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wetcher.
Brian Wetcher, eight one, or, I'm sorry, 2407 Forest Park Lane. Forgot my own address. I lived at the old one for four years, so you can forgive me for that. First of all, I want to thank the council and staff, and past council and past staff, and all of the planning commissioners, some of whom now sit on the council, that worked so long and so hard over the last four and a half to five years trying to make this happen. And I appreciate all of the community members, those with whom I agree and with whom I disagree about this process. We don't have a public process unless the public is engaged. And I think the, the city council and the planning commissioners, as well as staff, have made a real effort to have that happen in a meaningful way, and I would really like to compliment them on that. And just as a cautionary note, I would once again remind city council that by 2016, the ACFL Board had approved their comp plan change after two years of public hearings to update their 2008 plan to the 2016 update. And I'm, I'm not saying there was any fault involved, but I'm just pointing out that this doesn't work on time. It's a system that, that took this long and this much effort by all of these folks and all of the, everyone who was involved in this to get here, and we're not here anywhere near on time. And just as a cautionary note, I'm not saying it's bad governance, but something has to be different for us to be updating with best available science and best available policy in a meaningful way. We're, and I, I know that Tess has a couple of times in this process said, "We're almost to the next update, so maybe we can put this or that off to that period of time." I completely understand, but something needs to change in this process in the future for this to work properly. And I've been involved in comp plans since 1983. And I, I'll tell you, this was a lot of work and a lot of updates and changes, but I have never been involved in a comp plan update that took more than two and a half to three years. So I, just a cautionary note for the future, not necessarily for this council or this staff, but something needs to be different for us to have an efficient system at updating our comp plans and our land use plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wetcher. Any additional comments? All right, council, any other comments for Tess or Mr. Miesmer this evening?
Mayor.
Mr. Walters.
I agree with most of those comments. This is a complete rewrite of our critical area code to be consistent with our new Title 19, so it took a little bit longer than you might otherwise expect, but also it, it still went on too long. But I think it's three years out that we'll hit our next deadline. Is that right? Are we at an eight-year cycle now? So hopefully we'll actually achieve the deadline next time, and I expect that once we start using this, we'll find some errors or things that don't work quite as we expected, and we should queue those up and, and make those changes, and we can do them sooner than the three-year required update, or, or later. We do still have that stream relocation thing in here. If it is treated the way I think we expect, it might be fine, and we did narrow it, but may, maybe those, maybe those aren't the right words. Maybe we should queue that up right away for changes or updates sooner rather than later. Otherwise, I think we have a Otherwise, I think we have a workable document at this point, and we need to get it out there so that people start following the new standards rather than our standards from quite some time ago.
Anything else?
Mayor here.
Mr. McDougal.
Really quickly, Ms. Finley brought up stream relocation. I think I'm, tell me if I'm looking, Ms. Cooper, at the wrong section. I'm on page 65, section F. There's language that says, streams, like relocation of type F and MP streams may be permitted only when the proposed relocation is part of an approved mitigation or rehabilitation restoration plan. Is, is that the stream relocation portion? Okay. Can you tell us, Ms. Cooper, as, what part of an approved rehabilitation restoration plan means in that context?
Sure. So a lot of our streams are piped, culvered, ditched. So an approved restoration plan or relocation plan would be, it, the purpose of moving it is for the purpose of enhancing and, and providing better stream, sort of morphology and function, and, and biological value. So they're moving the stream ways in as an enhancement project, a fish, fish-friendly project, not just move it out of your way to build your warehouse expansion.
Okay. Is the, the approving authority for that, would that be Planning Director? Would that be another entity, like Ecology or something like that?
I think we have fish enhancement projects permitted alteration, so that would be an administrative decision, but it also does go to the fish and wildlife for, for HPA as well as, most likely to Army Corps of Engineers for approval as well for, depending on whether they deem it navigable waters or not.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we're gonna, yes, Kathleen, come on up.
I'm Kathleen Flanagan, 2005 Tenth Street, Anacortes. So I just, I'm, I just can't get past this. Months ago, there was a statement by the city that, and I think it came out of concerns from citizens, that no specific project such as the Gueimas Channel Trail was considered when the CAO was updated. Rather, the intent was just to broadly strengthen protections for the environment. But I think this section, 19.70.045, does not do that. It, it feels like it gives a green light to a trail going through Ship Harbor, which is a critical area, or through the buffer of it, I don't know. Anyway, I just, I worry about that. And then the second thing is, it's really hard for me to think of a multimodal corridor being in the same category as public services like gas, sewer, and stormwater. They, they just don't seem equal to me, and so I don't think it should be a permitted alteration. Thank you. Appreciate the time to talk.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, if it's time, I'm going to adjourn the meeting, and we'll be back next week to look at the critical areas ordinance. Thank you. Thank you. The meeting is adjourned.